Okay, we'll call to order the first public hearing for the purposes of soliciting public input relative to proposed ordinance panhandling control, Chapter 132. Anyone wishing to address the board, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 46 Hinsdale Avenue, G. Joy Brown.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I am an East End resident of Bully Manor, and I am also the president of the Basilica's Ladies Guild. I am in contact with panhandlers constantly between the East End and the Basilica. What I have witnessed is something that people shouldn't witness on a daily basis. There is a group that seems to hang out in the East End, primarily Wilkett Street area over near the mall. I've actually seen them come as far as Bully Manor on Manor Avenue. One of the gentlemen who is part of this group, I've actually seen him leave a car that's parked in the Sears parking lot and walk across the street to his little perch over near the entrance to the highway. They walk around with their little folding signs that say "Need Help," "Homeless," whatever. As soon as they hear a siren in the distance, that immediately gets folded up, put in their pocket, and they walk away. They walk up to a car, I shouldn't say they walk up to a car. When the light turns red, they start walking along the side of the road where the cars are, hoping somebody will see them with their little sign, and as soon as the light turns green, they fold it up, turn around, and walk back. I have called the police on multiple occasions, and as far as I know, nothing has ever been done. I've also had friends who have witnessed this group of panhandlers meeting outside Fridays and then dispersing to their allocations of where they're supposed to be. I personally have offered them care packages that contain toothbrushes, toothpastes, some food, some water, maybe a granola bar, to which I have been declined. They are time-sensitive and weather-sensitive. They will be out mostly when it's rush hour, or if the weather is bad, forget it, you'll never see them. It's amazing how a homeless person doesn't go out in the rain. There's also a gentleman that seems to hang out at Walmart, dressed in military clothes, soliciting. As far as I was concerned, I thought that was against the law. One of my biggest questions is, because of where they stand on the islands in a very heavy traffic area, what happens if one of them gets hit? Who's liable? Are they going to sue the city? Are they going to sue me? I drive by them all the time. How easy would it be for one of them to just fall off that island as they're walking and not paying attention? So that's one of the things that's really concerning to me, is how much liability do I have because of what they're doing? And not for nothing, panhandling is not a career choice, so something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 612 Hill Street, Michael Stangl.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Mike Stangl. I live at 612 Hill Street, and I have lived in this city for most of my 69 years. I'm noticing in this document that it says "Requesting a public hearing." I don't know if that means we're still to have one in the future or not. I would like to start by saying, I am a sucker for a hard luck story. I have given loose change when that was asked of me, and I have given as much as $20 when somebody said, "I live in Hartford, and my car broke down, and my friends are not going to come and pick me up, I need bus fare, or I need a full tank so much gas." It's very hard, especially now that I'm retired, because you work your whole life, you feel that you got, you know, you got just so much money, and you want to have a vacation or whatever, and yet, you know, the Good Book says that the good Samaritan is the guy that you should look to, so your heart goes out. I think the biggest problem that I have heard discussed over and over again, myself included, is who's really panhandling because they need the money, and who's panhandling because for some reason they're not on welfare, they're not getting some form of shelter. There's not a human being in the world that can't say that their heart doesn't go out to such people. The problem is, as an individual citizen, how do we decide who those people are? Up on Wilkett Street, the plaza up there, I've had a woman come up to me asking for money for food. Then I've had some people who work in that area coming to me and say, "Don't give her that money, she uses that for drugs. She's on welfare, and she lives on such and such a street." I've pulled into gas stations where people immediately start washing the windows looking for money, and I later find out that they're on subsistence, and they have an apartment, and they've been given money for food. So it's very difficult to say which way to go. With regard to the ordinance itself, it's very difficult for me to comment on it directly because I haven't seen it, and I don't know what lengths it goes to. What I would say is this: I would appreciate some form of ordinance that would reduce the panhandling in this city, because in my 69 years, I have seen it increase and increase and increase, and of course, with the job market the way it is, there's always an excuse, sometimes a good one. On the other hand, I'd like some form of, I don't know what the right word is, some reaching out with our hearts in this ordinance that says, "Under certain conditions..." I don't know how you decide who should be asking for money and who shouldn't. My view is, we have welfare, we have all kinds of aid to families, we have programs to give people shelter. My first question is, why isn't that working? I don't know the answer, and I hope that when you look at this ordinance, you will look at those issues, because all of that has to be addressed, not just saying, "Nobody can ask for money anymore, nobody can ask for help with gas," or... I mean, I've actually handed a guy a $10 bill, and he cried immediately, saying, "Oh, thank you, thank you," and went right off to McDonald's to get something to eat. You knew this person was hungry, but how do you decide that as an individual? I certainly don't know the answer, and I got to tell you, I think you're having a hard job in doing it yourselves. I wish you the very best of luck in determining the right way to do this. God bless you all.
Next speaker from 62 Avalon Circle, Richard Wood.
Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury, and I guess we're meeting again. I try to think of something to bring to you that would give you a balance point in terms of what we should do or should not do. And I remember a phrase or two from places that I've visited, like "You are your brother's keeper." Are we really? Yes, we are. And "Do unto others," and so on. The problem is with our panhandling, it's part of a larger problem that we're pushing under the rug, which is going to be a very expensive lesson a few years from now. A couple of years ago, I took a ride around town with former Mayor Mike Bergen, and we were doing the absentee ballots, and we had a chance to chat with people and look at people. And he says, "What are you doing?" And I said, "Well, this is what I do, I try to help out a little bit here and there." And I said, "What do you think we should do?" He says, "Keep on doing it." But the thing is, that many of these panhandlers have substance abuse problems that isn't being treated. We cannot just send people off to rehab or detox. They come back, and they break into your house, because they have no money, and they don't even have a place to live. We don't want to talk about homelessness. It's like a forbidden subject. Every time I bring it up anywhere, people look at me like I'm crazy. But the thing is, we have almost 1,000 homeless people in this town, and we're not doing much about it. 25, 30 years ago, Mike Bergen had the shelter built. The size of it is the same now as it was then. The population of homeless has tripled or quadrupled. So essentially, we're going to have to start putting our money where our mouth is. We need to take action, because I'm getting tired of watching people die a little bit every day. I drove down a street, Pine Street, the other day, parked at the bottom to answer their phone. Probably Jerry Pedula calling me up, inviting me for dinner somewhere. Guy comes out of the bodega there and says, "I have to move the car, because I'm with the police." I said, "I'm not with the police." He said, "Get out of here." Slam the side of my car. "Go out and look at it, you'll see it." Knocked in the side of it. When you leave here tonight, go up to the bottom of Pine Street, just watch the number of people by the fence by that bodega, they're lined up to buy drugs. After that, that happened last Thursday, I called it in, they said, "Vice will get in touch with you." I said, "Okay." Well, that was a week ago, nothing's happened since, but I know we're undermanned, and we're having some problems with vacations, so I don't expect the police to really get to it. But the thing is, we have to find a way of triaging our addiction folks and treating them like human beings, and if we do the business with the ordinance, we're going to have to retrain our police for sensitivity, because you cannot treat these people like animals and expect to get results. They just can't handle walking down the street, being talked to, never mind yelling at them. Like the other day, someone, I was over on Hillside with the students from the yeshiva, and one of our staff guys yelled at this woman standing on the corner. She had a legitimate civil rights right to stand where she was standing, never mind what she was doing. It was none of our business, and the guys from Williamsburg, the fellows with the black hats, you know, nobody knows them too much, they asked me, "What's going on?" And I explained to them in exact detail in their own language what was going on. And I said, "And it could happen to you."
One minute, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. We have to be aware of the fact that we have a high addiction problem, our heroin use is escalating. I sent somebody off to rehab today, I hope they got there. When they come out, they won't have a place to live. Waterbury Housing Authority has empty units. We're going to have to house them. We're going to have to give them a key when they get off the bus here, and we're going to have to have them given treatment and counseling. The problem is just growing immensely. I have a 25-year-old young lady, four months pregnant, using heroin. Wait till that kid hits the school system, and we think we've got problems now, it's going to increase. The thing is, we cannot shove the problem under a rug. We're going to have to spend some hard-earned money, much against everyone's choice, but we're going to have to do it, because we've got too many of these people that are dying, literally. Our Narcan use, check with the police, is huge, into the hundreds.
That's time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jinkoya. Peace be with you.
Next speaker is from 91 Farmwood Road, Vincent Martinelli.
Hello, Vincent E. Martinelli, 91 Farmwood Road. Because so many of you know me from so many different things that I do throughout the city and the boards that I might be on and so forth, I'm here for Main Street Waterbury to encourage you to vote in favor of the ordinance, because it's sensical, it's well-thought-out, and it doesn't resolve all the issues it isn't intended to. But it is part of a larger system, a five-pronged system. I happen to have the luxury of having read the proposed ordinance and the background that led to this and the additional pieces to it, so there is a legitimate problem, there's plenty of people out there who panhandle, and most of us have been panhandled, and it's difficult to tell who really is needy and who is just there making some easy money, so it's very difficult. But it does allow the police to have recourse, which is very important, and it's not intended to send people on their way, it's not intended to push them aside. It actually does them a service, because now we become somewhat responsible as citizens of the great city of Waterbury to do something, to step forward, to become educated, and to help direct these people to maybe the services that they either don't know about or are having trouble getting the benefits from. So I've been in the city for a long time, you know, most of you know some of my background, I can tell you that this issue impacts every neighborhood in the city, and it comes up at almost every neighborhood association, it comes up at almost every nonprofit board meeting every time they meet. So we need to do something. It is, like I said, sensical, well-thought-out, other cities are doing it, we learned from what other cities did, whether it was good or bad, we got clues from them, and we included a lot of people in the drafting of this, and I personally spoke to many of the police officers who also are in favor of this. I don't speak for all of them, but I don't see a downside to it, I don't think there's any negative side to this at all. It just allows us another tool to deal with it, it allows us to educate the public in a systematic way, and also it allows us to help our neighbor who might not be as fortunate as some of the rest of us are. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker from 48 Stokes Avenue, Dan Page.
Evening, everyone. Dan Page, 48 Stokes Avenue, and also I should say, since we are officially, I think, presenting this, I'm also on staff at Main Street Waterbury, and we help along Corporation Council develop some sort of language for this ordinance. The reason I'm speaking in this portion in public speaking is because we've had conversations in this entire process with people that are stakeholders in downtown, including employees and residents, and different folks that live and work in and around downtown. And one story that was especially bothersome to us, unfortunately she couldn't be here tonight, was from a young woman who was an employee on Bank Street, who gave us a written statement, she wanted her story to be told, so I have it here, it's quick and we'll move on. She writes, "On July 20th, around 8:00 a.m., I was approached by a gentleman on Bank Street who stopped me to ask for money. He told me he's not a drug addict, not an alcoholic, just a U.S. veteran who found out that his daughter was killed in a car crash in Hartford the night before. He needed $2 for bus fare to get up to Hartford. She didn't have any money on her." She writes that she attempted to exit the conversation, but he blocked her. "He again asked me for money and repeated his story. I told him again I had no money on me, and he still would not let me walk away without having to become physical. Told me to take out money from Webster Bank ATM right across the street, stood in front of a path. When I refused, he became quite vulgar, and at that point, I was able to exit the conversation. Same gentleman harassed another one of my fellow employees the following day with a similar story." So I think essentially that is the crux of this ordinance. We're not attempting to ban panhandling or asking for money in the city of Waterbury. That is a freedom of speech issue, and we wouldn't be able to trek that far. We want to stop things like this from happening, or at least put a stake in the ground and say that the city of Waterbury doesn't stand for that type of behavior. It's a deterrent for people who want to do business here, who want to live here, and who'd like to work here. And funny enough, I was actually panhandled on the steps walking in City Hall at 6:30 today, so it gave me a little extra incentive to come up here and tell this woman's story. And just so you guys know, the ordinance as written is to target that type of behavior and try to make it a little bit more clean, safe, and really friendlier downtown for everybody to do business and to live. So thank you very much.
Next speaker from 83 Bank Street, Zachary Keith.
Hi, Zachary Keith. I work downtown at 83 Bank, and I'm also here representing Main Street. I volunteer, and I'm on the Board of Directors. I work with the young woman that was panhandled aggressively. I'm the person who was panhandled the next day. I was approached on Grand Street, and he wanted me to walk into an empty storefront and give him my cellphone, and I knew immediately that it was the same person from the description of my coworker, because he said the same story, that he's a veteran, his daughter died the day before, and he needed a cellphone. I said, "I don't carry a cellphone, and I don't have any money, because I've worked downtown a long time, I worked at Ideal Jewelers before, and I went to UConn Waterbury, so I've dealt with panhandling a long time." So I'm just here to speak to the issue. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Lawrence DePillo, 11 Steuben Street in Waterbury. I came here tonight in support of this ordinance, and, you know, as a number of speakers who've addressed you this evening, it seems that they're really not very happy with the panhandling that goes on here in Waterbury, and if you came and parked here tonight, you had a woman driving around in her little vehicle who goes from car to car and asks for money every time somebody's in this parking lot. I know this is not about every panhandler, this is supposed to be about aggressive panhandling, and I think that's a very important issue. You've heard the person downtown who was basically accosted, and there has to be some language that allows the police to take action against aggressive panhandlers. I don't think this is an issue of Waterbury residents not being kind to people that need bus fare or would like to get a sandwich. I've done it in the past, I'm sure there's others, that if somebody said they needed some food, walk them to a restaurant and get food. Many times, when you tell them you'll bring them someplace or walk across the street to get them something, they'll walk away from you because it's not about food. And for those instances that there are, there have been plenty of people in this city who've assisted those. But this is about aggressive people, and I noticed a $50 fine associated with this, and I'm really not sure how that's going to be enforced. I would like to see not only a fine associated with this, but community work associated with this, that they have to actually do some community service for the city, whether it's eight hours or depending on what the severity was, longer. And if they don't pay the fine and don't show up to do the community service for those people that are aggressive, then I believe the ordinance should allow the police to issue an arrest warrant through the court. And if these individuals who are aggressive towards the residents and business people in the city return, they will know that they're subject to arrest. And I believe that's one way to prevent the aggressive panhandlers, which is what this ordinance is attempting to address, from continually coming back to the city and trying to accost those that they know are going to be afraid, such as what the case was by someone who spoke before to his board before, that they were actually afraid and opened up their pocket and gave them money because they were afraid that they were going to be hurt. And that's what this is about. It's not about somebody coming up and saying, "I need a dollar for food," or "I need $2 to take a bus." This is about individuals who, for whatever reason, become aggressive. And I believe you have to look at the penalties. We had an issue in this city a while back, and it's still an issue, with dirt bikes. And, you know, people said, "Well, you know, you cite them, you give them a warning," and we had a lot of damage done to our parks by people riding dirt bikes. And what was the solution? Was an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen that literally took the ownership away from individuals who violated the law with their dirt bikes.
One minute, Mr. Phil.
And if there's not teeth in an ordinance, then it's just writing on a piece of paper. So I believe the fine is important, I believe community service is important, and if they show up for neither, then an arrest warrant should be sought, and if those individuals come back and continue to harass the public, then they should be subject to arrest. And believe me, they'll find greener pastures elsewhere. Thank you.
Next speaker from 438 Austin Road, Joseph Lucien.
Good evening, Joseph Lucien, 438 Austin Road, Apartment 3. I had the pleasure recently of speaking with someone who was serving overseas, and this will tie into later, that made me think about something else. And as I told him more and more about some of the stuff that's been going on in Waterbury, which he has already known based on where he lives, he has experienced a lot of panhandling also, I asked him, "You know, what are things that Waterbury can do to increase the revenue?" And he said, "You know, if we had more tourist attractions and this was a friendlier place for people to come, there's no doubt they'd be here more." And you know, made me think about something even more basic than that, it made me think about the people here, the people in the surrounding cities, they're here every, all the time. Think if they have to deal with this, what's the chances of them coming out to shop here and spend money here and really make this place what it is all about? Now, I know it isn't always talked about, because not everybody knows about this, is the social services that are available to the people. I had the pleasure of going to Library Park on Saturday, and there was all different types of vendors there, but along with the vendors, there was new opportunities and 2-on-1. Now, if anyone doesn't know what 2-on-1 is, it provides a lot of services that you can get ahold of somebody 24 hours a day, which the lady recommended me actually calling them up at like 2:00, 3:00 in the morning just to see. And I think that's wonderful, which they would end up directing you depending on what it is, new opportunities, which we're fortunate enough to have here in Waterbury. I think offering these services is available to everybody in terms of, you know, this all comes back down to the police as well, and if you look on their cars, I don't know about the new ones, but they used to say, "Serve, educate, and protect." And to educate is everything, because when we keep our communities educated, we keep each other informed, and then we continue to move on from there. And I think if we all work together on this and we continue to push this forward, I know we can make this a better place to live. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I'm here tonight to ask that this board look into a community service rather than a fine. Quite frankly, if these individuals are looking for money to give them a fine, to pay the fine, they're going to be more adamant to panhandle just to pay the fine. And not to mention, you know, everybody talks about this fine like we're going to get the money. The state of Connecticut gets the money, the city doesn't get anything out of it. And, you know, yes, there are people out there that are in need, and I feel for them. I've handed people $5, sometimes $10, like everybody else here. I've handed people $5, sometimes $10, like everybody else here, especially around the holidays. But, you know, you see the same people at West Main and Watertown Avenue, right at the corner of Meriden Road and Hamilton Park. I can remember one of the times I did my walk through Hamilton Park, I had a gentleman standing there with a sign, "Please help, need food." So I gave him $5, and I watched, and I followed him to the other side of the park. He didn't go for food. He went to B&amp;N Liquor Store to get a 40 with the money that he had collected. Now, this whole thing about police officers and sensitivity training, I know for a fact that the city of Waterbury spends a lot of money sending these officers to constant sensitivity training. And, you know, you see these officers out there, they try to counsel these individuals, they give them options where they could go for help. I've been, in one case, I've been side by side with one of the officers, telling them places they could go. "Oh, no, no, I just need $10, because I don't, I don't want to go there. I, I just need $10 to get something to eat." There's only so much they could do, you know? And yes, sometimes they do get mad, because when they have a domestic dispute going on and they have the same individual that they just spoke to four hours before that, and they told them, "Listen, you can't hang around here," and they come back to the same spot when they could be at that domestic call and call, and they have to try and scramble to find somebody to go to that, that's a big problem. And, you know, this whole thing about, you know, arresting them, you know, I've been at the police department many times where these individuals have been brought in, and five minutes later, the bail bonds commissioner comes in and nolies it and says, "You can't do anything to them, let them go." So, I mean, we're at a 50/50 here. I think community service is the best option here, because eventually, I think, the aggressive panhandlers going out, picking up garbage, going wherever the city needs them to go, they're going to get the hint, "Can't do this anymore." There's nothing wrong with trying to help people, but when you try to help people and you give them options and they don't want to do the options, I don't know what to do. I think that this whole thing about the fine, I mean, we're going to be taking more officers off the street just to hand out fines, and we don't have enough as it is. I think the best option is, you know, having them do community service. So I would ask this board to, you know, talk this over and, you know, hopefully we could come to a sensible agreement. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 McCarthy Drive, Russ Daniella Weisman.
Good evening. I just wanted to-
I'm sorry, would you just, before you start, state your name and address for the record again?
Ah, yeah. Russ Daniella Weisman, from 11 McCarthy Drive in Waterbury.
Thank you.
Yeah, and when I lived in New Haven, there was a big problem with panhandling. And what program, a program that was in existence for a while, I'm not sure if it's still used there, is the local convenience stores could sell to people coins. I'm not sure if they were metal coins, some sort of thing. So when a, by a panhandler, you could have a stock handler, you could have a stock of $5 or $10 worth of these coins, whatever. When approached by a panhandler, you could give them one of these coins, then you know it's just used for food. So unfortunately, I did not have a chance to read the ordinance. I just saw the sign a couple days ago on the door. But I also don't think it makes sense to have a fine in this context. Seems like community service at a soup kitchen would be more appropriate, because once you have a fine or you have things that people can't do, as the gentleman mentioned, then you have arrests, then you have the whole mass incarceration thing, which we're trying to get away from. So I definitely don't think there should be a monetary fine. And again, since I did not read the statute, so I can't tell for sure, but if it just uses a term such as aggressive, probably it's not going to pass a constitutional muster. It's probably going to be considered too vague. But if it would target certain behaviors like threatening while panhandling or physically obstructing while panhandling, that would probably pass muster. Of course, I believe threatening and physically obstructing are also already forbidden by other statutes, right? But this would be an ordinance, hopefully put those sorts of things in a lesser context, I mean, a context of lesser punishment if they're happening during a panhandling incident. So those are my thoughts. I'd just like to finish up, but we have a tradition. In the Jewish religion, if someone asks you for money, you're supposed to give it to them. You may not have to give them everything that they ask for. If they ask for a 20, you only have two, or if you can only afford 20 cents, but you're supposed to try to give them what you could afford. And as I said, in New Haven, they had this kind of barter thing going on, so you could really make sure that the people that you were giving to could only spend it on a non-alcoholic drink. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing for the Panhandling Control Ordinance and open the public hearing for the purpose of soliciting public input, soliciting public input relative to a proposed ordinance change to increase residency points for the maintainer one position from 5 to 10. Anyone who wishes to address the board on that issue, please sign up with the city sheriff. There is a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Please state your name and address for the record.
11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen, Lawrence DePillo, 11 Steuben Street in Waterbury. 10 points for maintainers is something that's near and dear to my heart. I've lobbied very hard over the years, as have others, to give Waterbury residents a significant advantage over residents of the surrounding towns when it comes to getting jobs in this city, because those are the very people who pay the taxes. And because they pay the taxes, they should be given a significant advantage in getting the jobs that are available. And, you know, I see this as applying to maintainers, but the paper was pretty specific in the fact that it was not going to apply to police officers nor firemen. And, you know, I really believe that's a mistake. At this time, you know, there are paid departments in Nogatuck, there's paid departments in the other municipalities, some are still volunteer. But, you know, it's absolutely wrong to have somebody from Watertown or some other town come in here and take a job away from a Waterbury resident. If a Waterbury resident doesn't apply and someone from another town does, well, then the other individual should get the job. If the other individual exceeds the tests by 10 points over a Waterbury resident, well, then I guess they're better qualified and should get the job. But I don't think 10 points on a test is excessive, and obviously, the mayor doesn't think 10 points on a test is excessive, because he's proposing the 10 points for the maintainers. As I said, a number of people have lobbied this board and charter revision commissions in the past to have that apply to everyone. And I want you to think about that. Whether it's a fireman, a policeman, or any civil service person, who's the person who's more likely to take care of the equipment given to them? That resident that simply goes home to Watertown or Cheshire? Or that Waterbury resident who understands that if that tool is not maintained properly, it's their tax dollars that has to replace it? The same goes for police cars and other vehicles. My understanding is that we have firemen, and I'm not saying anything against anyone, but take home vehicles 30 miles, 40 miles from Waterbury. Who's paying the insurance and who's paying the gas for those vehicles as opposed to somebody that lives in the city? And when you have a police officer, they're on duty 24 hours a day, as is a fireman. Do you have better protection in your neighborhood when your officer is living on your street? And although he's off-duty, there's no question that there's sometimes a police car there, and other times, people know that that officer lives in that neighborhood. Or are you better protected when that officer is living in Cheshire or Watertown or Prospect? So I'm very happy to see that these 10 points are being given to the maintainers. But as I have before this board, before charter revision commissions, I really would like you Aldermen to consider those 10 points for every job in the city of Waterbury. It's not just the maintainers that deserve a leg up. It's everyone who pays taxes in this city and is looking-
One minute.
-to be employed by this city as well. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Next speaker from 96 Downstreet, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 96 Downstreet. I have to say, I do agree with former Alderman Larry DePillo. I think it's something that's appropriate, should be done. I'm looking at 10 points, maybe 15 points, maybe if we could go 10 points for just regular citizens, if you will, 15 for veterans. You know, we've got to understand that veterans did a lot for this country. I know Michael's a veteran. I know we have probably quite a few veterans here, and I know Michael here is a veteran too. A lot of us, you know, did a lot of things for our country, whether we be civic-minded or whatever we did within our communities, and I think that's something we should look at. Also, I think, you know, I was always in favor of residency law, because I know in some places down south, they do have residency law, but that's something that would never work out, because I guess from what I understand, talking to people, you can't tell people where to live. But, you know, what you could do is great, have a great incentive. And I'm looking at something else, is maybe you could give people who want to come to the city of Waterbury, give them a tax break, and they'll probably come here and move here. That's probably the reason why they're not here, because the mill rate's high and the taxes are high. And I just think maybe if you could look at that, and it's a serious issue, and give them some type of a tax break, if you will, along with this new proposal as far as 10 points, and like I said, extra five points for veterans, that might be an incentive for them to come here to Waterbury. Because I, I just don't understand, you know, because I go on and tell you people, you know, the taxes are so high, and I don't understand why my property tax is so high. Maybe someday, you people, somebody on the Board of Aldermen, Republican, Democrat, could tell me why my property tax is so high in the house I can't even sell. And that's the problem right now in Waterbury. We're all suffering, and I understand it. You know, we've got to do what we've got to do, but the bottom line is, if we could turn around and create some great incentive, if you will, to have people come here and stay in the city of Waterbury, live here and raise their families and be productive here, maybe things would work out a lot better, where we won't have people panhandling anymore because people be employed. I understand that, you know, you people do the best you can, and, you know, we're all working together as Americans, and I appreciate that. And we're very diversified here in Waterbury. And that's another thing I want to bring up. I think you should look for more minorities to get on the fire department, police department, and especially the teachers. I'd like to see more minorities become teachers, because I know when I was in school, I didn't have many minority teachers, you know, at my age. I mean, we, you know, we didn't have that many minorities in the city of Waterbury working for the city of Waterbury. But we should create some kind of a great incentive to have them not to make excuses, you know, as we had in the past, but make sure we're going to maintain that order and keep people, you know, keep their feet to the fire, if you will, and say, "Hey, we've got to start hiring more minorities in the city of Waterbury and do what we can," because these people want to live here, they want to work here, they want to raise their families. I know a lot of minorities that live in my neck of the woods in Waterville, up on Ford Hill and Downstreet. They're wonderful human beings, and they're good folks, and they work hard every day. I know some work two or three jobs, and they, they need, you know, what they have to do, because they have to raise their families. So if we could look at that aspect and maybe, you know, not, not turn around and say, "We want to do something for, you know, affirmative action," if you will, because I know that had never worked in the past, but maybe the new affirmative action, and that is to, you know, get more people involved, hire more minorities-
One, one, one minute, Marty. But I also have to ask you to come back to the topic of residency points. You've gone a little bit far of the field, where we were.
Right, okay. And, and do what you can to track more minorities with these points. That's what I wanted to say, Mr. President. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier. I, I'm in support of this 10-point plan for the maintainers. I think it's a good thing. I mean, a lot of these guys in the city, and women for that matter, coming into these jobs, you know, we should do everything we can to keep Waterbury employees here. And a lot of these jobs today, a lot of these people are taking huge pay cuts than what they could be making anywhere else, but they do it like I do to help the city and to keep the city going. And, and on their behalf, to help out and keep Waterbury people here and working here, I'm all for it. As far as the police and the fire, as much as I would like everybody to live here in those two fields, I believe if we could hire somebody from Waterbury, do it. But quite frankly, in those trades, we need the best of the best. They're putting their lives on the line every day to keep us safe. If that means that there are some people from the city that are qualified, then we should do everything we can. But I don't believe that we should be singling out all Waterbury people in those two fields when there could be somebody that's scoring higher or might know the trade better than that. And lastly, Mr. President, you know, I, I hear this too many times, too many times, and it's becoming more and more every day. We're all one family. And, you know, this whole thing, we see more and more people throwing this thing out there, minorities, like it's, it's, you know, tossed around out there.
Mr. Pelletier, I know Marty went off on this, but the, this is a public hearing for the ordinance for residency points, so I'm just going to have to ask you to stick to that topic.
All I have to say is, I don't care what color you are, what race you are. If you're qualified, so be it. That's where I stand. You know, we keep seeing this over and over again throughout the country and throughout the city. I don't care who you are, as long as you're qualified, and this whole rhetoric's got to stop eventually. So I'm all for the 10 points. I'm all for anybody that lives in the city, no matter what they are, to work for the city, and that's all I have to say.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, August 21st, 2017. I would ask, since we've last been together, we've lost two gentlemen who were very dedicated public servants, particularly to the city of Waterbury, our city sheriff's father, former representative Tom Conway, and we've also lost in the last week, former mayor Mike Bergen. So I would ask that you keep Mr. Conway and Mr. Bergen and their families in your prayers this evening. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer. So I would ask that you keep Mr. Conway and Mr. Bergen and their families in your prayers this evening. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Bernelli.
Here.
Alderman Chiquetti. Alderwoman Cummings. Alderwoman Cato. Alderman DiGio Van Carlo. Alderman Giacomi. Alderman Guerrero. Alderman Hadley. Alderman Kula. Alderman Lopez. Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy. Alderman Napoli. Alderman Padula. Alderman Sherman. Alderman Prunaruski. Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, the first order of business this evening would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from Six One Two Hill Street, Michael Stangel.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am here to speak regarding item eleven. There are six items there that request for bonding. I'm not going to go into whether or not these things are important, I'm sure they are. My concern is, there's seventeen and a half million dollars on that, on the, when you add those six items up. I would like the board to consider how many bonds we are paying off as we add more on, because we are already at a tax level in this city that is pretty close to the highest in the state. And I'm, well, I don't want to go too deep in that. We, we do, we all know that high taxes keeps the, the prices of the, our properties down, and it does not encourage people to come here to live, and more importantly, it does not encourage growth in our business area. So all I'm asking you to do when you consider this bonding is to consider what you can pay off so that the taxes don't continue to go up. I appreciate your time and the work that you do. Once again, God bless you all.
Next speaker from Eleven Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening. All times, Mr. DePillo.
It does seem like it, doesn't it? Anyways, Lawrence V. DePillo, Eleven Steuben Street. I'm here tonight to talk to you about Eleven B and Twenty-One, which is the Phase One of the Greenway. And I see that there's a nine-point-five-million-dollar bond, and I know that there has been money set aside for that Phase One of the Greenway for quite a number of years now. And I know that there was newspaper articles saying that the project was going to start in the year two thousand and eighteen, and it'd be very nice to see that Phase One actually move forward. Now, the Phase One was to start in Nogatuck and end up by Eagle Street. I hope that is still what we are speaking of in the Phase One of the Greenway. One of the highlights of that Greenway was the Anita Meyer Park, donated by Mrs. Anita Meyer and her family, to be used as a boat launch and also a kayak launch into the Nogatuck River. I know there was delays because of Indian Lord that had been found on that property. I hope that's been resolved, and that that is one of the first projects to get underway as part of the, the Greenway, both the park and the launches. The other issue has to do with Twenty-One, which is the agreement between the Department of Transportation and the city regarding the Greenway. And I'd like to remind you, and hopefully you'll bring who's ever here tonight for this before you, as to whether or not the state has agreed to spend what was being estimated as a million dollars to reinforce the wall that was on South Main Street that was crumbling into the river, which was one of the main reasons that the DOT had been refusing and dragging their feet, and any way they could delay this project, because they did not want to have to spend the money to repair that wall. So I hope whatever agreement that this alderman and the city is making definitely includes with it a very strong agreement with the Department of Transportation, that they are responsible to make, to make sure that that road is completely suitable for the walkway and bikeway that is proposed, and that they aren't simply going to have the city start this project and then throw their hands up in the air yet again regarding the reinforcement of South Main Street and the riverbank. That's very important. I hope you aldermen address that with the city engineer or who's ever here, and make sure that that is in stone in that agreement. And with that, I, like many others who were part of the Greenway Committee for many, many years in this city, look forward to that project actually being started. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from Ninety-Six Downstreet, Martin Spring.
We meet again. Martin Spring, Ninety-Six Downstreet. I just want to say that on behalf of the Conway family, I was honored to go to Steve's father's wake, and I know he was a veteran, and I was honored to be there. And I was also went to former Mayor Bergen's wake too, and I was really happy and honored to be there too. I know Steve's father for a long time from the Brooklyn Community Club and, you know, around the city, and I know his father always came to a lot of veteran events that we had at Fort Hill, and I know a lot of you guys probably were there too, and down at the Veterans' Memorial Park, where we fired off the muskets and also downtown for the veterans. So I just want to say that. But I did want to let people know that I met Mayor Bergen when I just turned eighteen years old to vote. I met him in City Hall. Obviously, he tried to get me to become a Democrat, but I said, no, my parents are Republicans, I'm gonna, I told you that story, Paul, and my parents wanted me to stay Republican. So anyways, nevertheless, that I, I was just honored to meet him, and I, and I bring something up that was very important. When my father passed away in May nineteen ninety-eight, Mayor Bergen and his family were very accommodating to help me have my father placed up at the Veterans' State Cemetery in Middletown. So if you guys ever go up to State Veteran Cemetery, you'll see my father, Sergeant Harry W. Spring, World War II veteran. He went in nineteen thirty-eight, and he got discharged nineteen forty-five. And so I was just happy that they did that for us, and they helped our family out. Also, I just want to say that I'm glad that Carl Rose is here from Main Street, because I want to let him know something. I know you're not, you know, you're not at fault, but I went downtown because they had something with the farmer's market, and this date was eight-three-seventeen, obviously in August, and I went down. I only went down for a few minutes, I parked by Saint John's Church down there, right on the corner, because we parked there before, Paul, you know that, where we parked there for, did the event for the veterans. Anyways, I come back out, and I was, and I've been there a few minutes, and I come back out, and I got a twenty-dollar ticket on my, on my car, and I paid it. I couldn't believe it, twenty dollars. And I said, the reason why I bring you, bring that up, Carl, because with all due respect, who's going to come downtown when they're hitting you for twenty bucks to come down there? Man, I was flaming mad, I'm telling you, I couldn't believe it. I parked there before, I never got a ticket, and the meter is broken, I know you got to go to KOPS, but the lady down from me, she didn't even get a ticket at all. And here I am getting a twenty-dollar ticket, and I'm chairman in Human Rights Commission, and I was going with the State Human Rights Board, because we talked about that at our meeting, they were down there, and I was having, you know, helping them, passing out flyers. And the guy sees me run away, says, where the heck are you going? I said, I'm getting tapped. I said, you've got to be kidding me. So anyways, I paid it. As a good, good person should do that. Also, I just want to say that I just met this gentleman here, and I'm very glad and that he's got his name for Human Rights Commission. I'm going to be, I'm going to look forward to working with you, sir, and you've got a, a nice son there. And you know, I, I know that we're going to need a very diversified group of people on the Human Rights Commission, and so I would ask you people to consider putting this gentleman on the board. I know I don't know him, I know I'm seeing him around, and you know, we, we talked a little bit, and I, I know there was some thing down here for some demonstration, I wasn't down here for that. I didn't really want to take any sides, and I know that the first time, I believe, I saw you is when we had some group called Act Up, and I went down there to say hello to everybody. I know some of them people, and no, I'm not a white supremacist. And I went to the other end to say hello to other people too, okay? And it was just because, you know, people got blond hair and blue eyes doesn't mean they belong to the KKK or the old Nazi.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
All right, because you guys know me, I'm not like that, all right? Believe me, I lived in Waterbury majority of my life. Also, I want to say one more minute, and I agree with some of the people who are up here about bonding. We've got to watch out when we start doing all this bonding, and I know this, I know the state's coming down, government lawyers are going to be giving quite a bit of money to the city of Waterbury, and that's a great incentive for the Education Department, I'm glad to hear that. But the bottom line is, we've got to watch out, with all the money we spend, we've got to be fiscally conservative, because I know I am at home. I'm very fiscally conservative. Again, I just want to say, I'm looking forward to see this gentleman coming on our board, and I'm looking forward to work with the Board of Aldermen. As you know, Reverend Mallory and I, we used to give a quarterly report, and we're going to start doing that again, we're going to get very active with this board, and I'm glad Brenda's on the board, she's a lovely lady, and you know, she works really hard with us, and I do appreciate that, okay? And I guess my minute's up, right, Mr. President? And, and next time I lead the musket at home, huh?
Next speaker from One Twelve Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
One Twelve Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier. I just wanted to speak about a couple things. First of all, Mr. President, I just wanted to start off by congratulating Stephen Giacomi. He's come out, and he's a new dad, and I wanted to congratulate him on his new daughter. I don't think I'll be Godfather, but I just wanted to congratulate him. Secondly, Mr. President, I wanted to commend your substitute at the beginning of the meeting. I thought he did a great job. I know it's his first time up there, but he handled himself pretty well, so I wanted to congratulate him. Few things I wanted to talk about. First, my condolences to the Conway family and Bergen family. I wasn't able to attend the Conway wake, but I talked to Steve, and you know, Mr. Conway and Mayor Bergen, I, I got to know Mayor Bergen a lot, because his sister-in-law tutored me as a child. And these two gentlemen, I mean, if there were two people that loved and cared about Waterbury, these two guys were it. They were truly inspirations to me as a young child, still are, now that I've gotten involved in being park commissioner, and hopefully my, down the line, lead to mayor and governor someday, but I'll take it one step at a time. But I could remember after my swearing-in as park commissioner the next day, one of my first phone calls was from former Mayor Bergen, congratulating me and my family, and always talked about how great of a kid I was growing up, you know, working his campaigns, and you know, was quite intrigued, like everybody else, with the bagpipes coming in, and asked me why I decided to have bagpipes. I told him I wanted to let the park board know what was coming, you know, change and working together. But you know, it's sad to see them go, but they will never be missed, and I hope as a commissioner, I could embody what they did for the city of Waterbury and working with everybody, and that's, that's key to getting anything done in the city. And I know that this mayor has tried, and we all have tried to work together to bring the city back, and I think we've done a great job in doing that. Secondly, item number eleven, I heard some previous speakers talk about, we have to watch the bonding, and yes, I believe we do, but in looking at a lot of these items, I mean, these, these aren't items that could be put off another year. Quite frankly, I could speak to one of them, item D. I worked at Sprague a couple of times, and you know, for years and years prior to the new school inspector and everybody, that, that roof, to my knowledge, has been put off a few times, has some leaks, and I don't think, in my professional opinion, being a maintainer, think that it could go another year without being replaced. I just, all these items, I can't see us putting off. I mean, everybody wants their street paved, everybody wants their blighted buildings and their neighborhood taken down, people want the Greenway.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
I just would like to see this pass, and lastly, Mr. President, I'll leave you with this, I know that we're in the campaign season, and you know, it's fun for everybody, but you know, people want to see what's going on now, people working together. People don't want to see the past politics or the past name-calling and everything, and I just hope that we could keep the tradition that we've had over the last few years in running fair campaigns and campaigns with facts rather than fiction. So I wish everybody the best, and let's continue to keep Waterbury going. Thank you.
Next speaker from Eleven McCarthy Drive, Russ Daniele Wiseman.
Good evening. This is Russ Daniele Wiseman again, from Eleven McCarthy Drive. I brought in a little demonstrative evidence with me tonight. I had a few other pieces, but somebody accidentally threw them out. What this all about, is all about is, at the corner of MacArthur and Moran, which is, you know, the corner where I live, people typically speeding by there at a, I don't know, I'm sure I've heard people going seventy miles an hour or more. The top of Moran is Hill Street, the bottom of Moran is Cook. People really get a high, high rate of speed. There's an accident there, I would say, at least once a month. I mean, I'm not that home, home that often, but I'm witnessing an accident at least once a month. Anytime I'm out in the yard, there's usually a near miss, at least every hour. The time this went flying, the two cars, again, I don't know, I heard a thud, it was like, it was like a truck ran into the side of a building. And I went out, I saw one car, they, they were like a block apart was how far their impact was, and they were both askew in the middle of the road. You know, the, the people inside did not seem to be moving. I went in and I called nine-one-one. I, I don't know ultimately what happened to these people, but you know, eventually an ambulance came. And whatever, I just feel like it's only a matter of time till there's a fatality at this corner, God forbid. I don't know, for all I know, there have been already. So ideally, I think MacArthur really should be made into a dead end, so people can't be careening around there. The problem with the visibility, it's not just speed on Moran, it's also visibility, because there's a curve at the top of Moran, so whenever I need to make a right on, out of MacArthur onto Moran, you know, I stop at the sign, and then I pull forward about four feet, and I look up and around the corner. But not everybody who comes to that corner realizes that you have to do that, so most of them don't, and they pull out, and then the person coming down from above is also not expecting anybody to be, why would anybody be on the right side of the road, you know? They come careening around, and they hit right there in the middle. Like I said, I've had the dream for years that we just make this into a little garden in between our property and the Vestros' property, and you could very easily make a dead end on MacArthur and divide Moran into two streets, and I think that would solve a lot of problems. There is a little patch of wood, wooded area over there for sale currently. I don't know what it's going for, but you know, I'd be happy to give part- I don't know what it's going for, but, you know, I'd be happy to give part of our property, and there would be room for quite a nice little parklet there. In the meantime, I feel there needs to be at least a couple of stop signs, maybe three or four stop signs, because it's a three-corner stop, but people are coming so fast that they're not going to see those stop signs. So I would think there needs to be stop signs a block or two down as well to stop the flow of traffic. Are there any questions? I don't know the format, if people ask questions. Is there any other group I should be speaking to, like zoning and planning? Or is this the department that puts up stop signs?
The street department, we refer to the police department and to the public works department to take a look at that area to see. There are studies that they would have to do, so we can do that.
Okay.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. With that, the next order of business would be to consider the minutes of the meeting from Monday, July 17, 2017. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from Monday, July 17, the regular meeting.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Chiketti, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any, are there any additions or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, nope. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. We will split up, do the committees simultaneously tonight. So intergovernmental, I believe, will stay here, and finance will go into the caucus room. And we'll be recessed until the committees are done with their work.
How are you?
I didn't stay until the bar, so I didn't get to see them.
I bet it was me. It's cold.
Who's sheriff? Sheriff.
We'll call tonight's intergovernmental meeting to order. Please be quiet in the chamber. Thank you. First item on the agenda is item number 24. From Captain Ed DePonte, Waterbury Police Department, seeking authorization for the police department to apply for the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, J-A-G-E. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved and seconded, any discussion? Captain, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I have a motion approved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Captain, can you stay for item number two?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is item number two, from Gary Russo, legal advisor for the Waterbury Police Department, requesting approval of the Waterbury Area Traffic Safety WATS program grant from the state of Connecticut in the amount of $110,298. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Thanks, Captain.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number 21, from Salvatore Porzio. Is he in finance?
Sorry.
Sorry. Seeking approval of project authorization letter PAL between City of Waterbury and the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the rights away services in connection with the Waterbury-Noggetuck River Greenway Phase One. And authorize the mayor to execute said PAL on behalf of the city of Waterbury. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Cummings.
Thank you. You heard some of the questions earlier about the state's promise to pay and promise to do certain things about the retaining wall. Can you opine a little bit if those services are still going to be completed?
First thing is, the project still is as planned from the Noggetuck border to Eagle Street. I don't believe the state promised they would do the wall, they would look at the wall. These are called bin walls or crib walls. There's one at the bottom of Huntington Avenue, and the state has a list, and they're going down their list when they're studying the walls and then when they're going to correct any deficiencies. Our wall, the wall in South Main, is on the list. We've been asking them to move it up, but they have assured us, they did promise us that if we, if there was any damage to our greenway due to the failure of the wall, they would be 100% responsible for that damage.
So at this time, what do you anticipate will happen? Do you think that the wall will get done? Will it impede our ability to complete the project?
No, it will not. We have to obviously be cognizant of the wall and minimize any heavy-duty construction in the area, try to minimize any negative impacts on that bin wall or crib wall. But our plan is to go forward with our design, and that's the state's plan. They told us that we should move forward with our plan, and that's what this PAL is. It's a significant step in moving forward with the project, and so is the bonding. We're in the preliminary design phase. With the bonding money, we'll pay for the construction phase. But we need that money in place to move forward. We also need the PAL in place.
Is having to work around the wall not being fixed at the time going to make this project more expensive for us?
No, it will not.
And when are we planning on starting and completing this project at this time?
The present schedule has us going out to bid in late 2018, being contract awarded in 2019 with an approximate 18- to 24-month construction schedule.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Porter. Next item on the agenda is from the Board of Education, Kerry A. Swain Clerk, requesting review and approval of an agreement with the Children's Community School Incorporated at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Cummings.
Thank you. Just a quick question, a general question for all of these. What is the benefit that the partners that we're working with are actually able to receive? Because typically, no one does anything for free, hardly ever. So I'm just looking to see, what is the benefit of these programs?
Well, the benefit to the programs that are offering, I'm sorry, Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education.
Yeah. The benefit to the programs that are offering the services, the benefit to the students who are receiving the services, there's no question there. But the people who are providing the services, what benefit do they receive from offering these things at no cost to us?
So for the five or six that we have on the agenda tonight, the people that allow us to provide services, transition through them, they'll get help in their maintenance department, their kitchen. They're providing training to these children, and the children are providing a service to them. While they have to be trained after a certain period of time, they really don't need that training as much anymore. They're learning job skills, and they're providing that service to the transition site. So it could be anything from kitchen, maintenance, they work with children at Brass City. So any of those things that the kids are doing are helping them out.
Fantastic. You answered my question. Thank you, as always.
Alderman Caddo.
What special trainings, if any, are provided to those agency or organizations that are providing and allowing those students to go to their sites and learn and have that experience, if any, in order to ensure that the students that are going to those sites are being well treated?
So we send our staff with those children who are trained to help them learn new skills. I believe all of them, except for Bell Academy, even Bell Academy, they, we always have, I won't call it a chaperone, but we always have a teacher, a paraprofessional, or a job coach that goes with them to these sites to ensure the safety of our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you. Could you ladies stay up there for a bit? Next item on the agenda is from the Board of Education, Kerry Swain Clerk, requesting your review and approval of an agreement between Bell Academy of Cosmetology LLC at no cost to provide transition services with students with disabilities. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Next item on the agenda is item number 26. From the Board of Education, Kerry A. Swain Clerk, requesting your review and approval of a professional services agreement with Delta T Group Hartford, Inc., for a three-year period, and not exceed the amount of $1,282,600 to provide school psychological and related services to the Waterbury School District students. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Cummings.
Thank you. My understanding is that this was negotiated blindly, without understanding of the cost, only after you picked your top where the costs revealed, and then they were negotiated down to bring them closer in line with something that was feasible for the district. What were the other hourly rates? Are you allowed to disclose those to us?
I am.
Okay. Would you mind sharing those with us, please?
Not at all. For Delta T, the contractor we decided to go with, their first year was $125 an hour, $135 the second year, and $145 the third year. So we negotiated them down to 95 an hour for all three years. The other prices, there was one for 105, 106, 107 for three years. Another contractor was $64 a year, who received very little points as far as their interview and their ability to provide services. There was another one for 71, 70, 71, 72. And the last year was $80, but they never, we never could get a hold of them.
Okay. So it sounds like we are right in the range, and you guys were able to bring them down significantly in your negotiating. Thank you.
Thanks.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Next item on the agenda is item number 27, from Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, requesting your review and approval of an agreement with the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Inc., at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hearing none, I have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Your ladies are going to get tired up there. Next item on the agenda is item number 28, Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, requesting your review and approval of an agreement with Abbott Terrace Health Center Incorporated at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Next item on the agenda, item number 29, Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, requesting your review and approval of an agreement with Brass City Charter School, Inc., at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Next item on the agenda is item number 30, from Kerry A. Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, requesting your review and approval of a college faculty request reservation agreement with Noggetuck Valley Community College at no cost for the use of a room on campus for the Transition Learning Center program of students with disabilities. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Can I see you, can I see you for item 32? I tried to sneak. On 32? Okay, ladies, all set. You may leave. Thank you. Okay, item 32. What do you want to do, Paul? Refer that? Well, if he's involved now, we could take one more item. We can do another one in the meantime. He might be up there now. Hi, Mr. Branker.
I was in with the finance committee.
I know. They're not any fun like us, though. Next item on the agenda, item number thirty-two, from Carrie Swain Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, requesting your review and approval of an agreement with Waterbury Symphony Orchestra, Incorporated, and a not exceed amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars to provide music mentoring services to students enrolled in the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brinker. Next item on the agenda. Item thirty-one, from Nick Del Monte Assistant Corporation Counsel Interim, requesting approval of proposed ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on all applications related to the installation, alteration, and relocation of wireless communication facilities within the public rights away in the city of Waterbury. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? No questions for Attorney Webby?
You, you can't approve of it, you need to have a public hearing. It mistakes, it, I, it's a proposed ordinance, so you need to set a public hearing.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Okay, we reject that motion to approve and a motion to set a public hearing for next meeting. Mr. President, what date is that? Motion is made for September twenty-fifth at six forty-five P.M. in these chambers. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number twenty-five, from Neil O'Leary, Mayor of the City of Waterbury, appointment to the following individuals, board to wit. Dan Pace, Republican, to the Litter Control and Beautifications Commission, terms shall commence on eight twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, and run to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Next is Fad Said, Democrat, Human Rights Commission, terms shall commence on eight twenty-one seventeen to twelve thirty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Motion not to disapprove.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All the women comings.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple words about both of these gentlemen. You guys have worked so incredibly hard and you're very dedicated to your communities. I've had interactions with both of you and you guys are gonna be stellar on both of these boards and we're very excited to have you as part of the boards and commissions, so congratulations.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion not to disapprove. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda will be old business number one, from Carl Wokes, CEO, Waterbury Main Street, eighty-three Bank Street, Waterbury, requesting a public hearing, win a vote on the ordinance. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion at all? All the women comings.
Thank you. Carl, thank you for all your hard work and dedication on this, you know?
Thank you.
Having been a part of Main Street Waterbury and watching how long this has been in the process and the hard work that it takes, and for someone who works downtown and who on a daily basis has to deal with panhandlers who are rather aggressive, this is going to help bring the city into a new life. I think the public perception and the issues that we deal with in Waterbury will be directly targeted by this kind of action. We're taking steps to protect our businesses, we're taking steps to protect our constituents and the people who come down and utilize our businesses, so I thank you for all of your hard work and I'm looking forward to having a safer, cleaner Waterbury. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Greer, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to state that I work with the community and with the homeless individuals and I want to state that this ordinance is about aggressive panhandling and not panhandling. Everyone has a right to ask for assistance and everyone also has the right to answer yes or no and not have to worry about how that person is gonna interact with them. I also like the fact that you're pointing out that many agencies that are inside Waterbury and that are helping these individuals overcome the situations they might be in. A lot of times, they forget about these agencies, they don't know about these agencies, and they think that it's upon themselves to have to be the one to assist these people. Just knowing that the agency's around and that they don't have to worry about being aggressively forced to give someone money is a very important issue. And I wanna make sure that people aren't worrying too much about how this fine or ordinance is gonna be implemented, because it's more about aggressive panhandling and those individuals, if they're, if this ordinance isn't on the books, they're probably gonna be fined with something else, maybe assault, maybe disorderly conduct, so they're probably gonna be fined with something else anyway. And this shows the individuals working in the community, living in the community, that the city does care about their safety as well as the agencies that are working in the community, that people know about them and that they'll help finance them with donations rather than addressing a, a small obstacle rather than the original obstacle that's making these individuals have to panhandle in the first place. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion approved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is old business number two, from Mr. Scott Morgan, Human Resource Director, for proposed ordinance change to section thirty-seven point zero zero nine, credit allowances, the change to the residency, residency. Okay, got it misspelled. Points from five to ten for the maintainer one position. I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you very much, and I also wanna say I thank the board for, we did raise the firefighter to ten, too, I just wanna clarify that. Thank you very much.
That concludes our business for the evening. Can I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Okay, I call the Finance Committee to order, first item on the agenda, item four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Augment approve a refund every month of three hundred and eighty-two dollars. For Connecticut Permit Service, Monmouth, Connecticut, for cancellation of moving permit number P R two zero one seven zero 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 one two one one, or four oh one New Ridge Ave, submitted by E. Y. Ray.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Augment approve a refund every month of four hundred and fifty dollars for the solar city, Rocky Hill, Connecticut, for cancellation of moving permit, number P R two zero one six zero 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 one zero seven seven, an electrical permit, and electrical permit, number P R two zero one seven zero 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 one zero eight seventy, for two forty-one fifty, Hickory Hill Drive, submitted by E. Y. Ray.
So moved?
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Augment approve a refund of, in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, from Mars Electric, that's alternated, which is the electrical permit, number P R two zero one six zero 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 two zero five five, for twenty-one, twenty-one Thompson Edelweiss, submitted by E. Y. Ray.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion?
Anyone here from the, from the, from the, whatever it is? I just wanna know, every, every one of these canceled, is there some kind of fee that they pay for canceling a donor? Okay, okay. Yeah, no, I'll ask them down the road.
I believe there's a penalty, but it's a percentage.
Right.
Um, I seen about this one here, but, uh, yeah, percentage.
Okay.
Percentage? It is ten percent. It looks like it's ten percent.
Okay, yeah.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number nine, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Augment approve the per Dr. Grant, an aid funding application for state fiscal year two thousand and eighteen in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty thousand, thousand, three hundred and sixty hours and thirty-six cents, as submitted by Cynthia, by, by Tom, Assistant Director of.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Who's here for me?
I? Um, I just have a quick question. I noticed that there are, I believe, three or four different items and a couple of them were actually being sort of re-submitted to us, be ratified. What, do you know what, what happened? That they were, not, not submitted to us, or?
It's my understanding that the Corporation Council was following a different process with what is sent, um, to you. So your two grants are coming to you, they're already in action.
Right.
Asthma and opioid and these other grants are new, um, new contracts and new things.
Okay, but, um, some of whom were actually acted upon in two thousand and sixteen, so, and they have received funding according to the documents that I read.
The, the asthma?
Yeah, I believe those were the two, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we're following the direction of Corporation Council in terms of the process. So it's my understanding from the day it came to a new understanding of their process for us.
Okay, so it's, so it's been ratified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Augment approve a budget transfer to the city's general fund, budget for fiscal year ending twenty-three to two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, submitted by Sarah, our very policy of medical services specialists.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. Quick question, I know Ophelia and I used to talk about this quite a bit, and I guess in the absence of a project director, it's my understanding that you're kind of handling those duties. Obviously, we had no idea what the arbitrator was going to hand out. I know in the language and the narrative attached to your submission, it says that these wage increases that were recently granted, you know, now come into play and that they were not built into the fire department's budget, but instead were budgeted into the contingency account. Now, when you say budgeted, was there, was there sort of an assumption or some sort of amount that we, again, to not re-repetitive, assumed was going to be handed out from the arbitrator? When you say they were budgeted, was it just sort of a big number that we hoped would cover the cost?
Okay, three brand calculations. We had done approvals for FY fifteen and sixteen, so we had money set aside to cover those years, and then what was budgeted in the contingency account for FY seventeen had to account for the G W I order for FY seventeen as well as the account of the prior year, so we did have enough money set aside to cover the arbitration award that came out.
Right, so I just, I think you kinda answered my question, but, you know, were we sure from the very beginning that we had enough money because it was sort of more like a, again, to use the word budgeted, we had, we had run some calculations and we sort of knew that, you know, barring any unforeseen extreme ruling from the arbitrator, we expect that there will be some sort of award in this amount?
Craig, were you a hundred percent sure that we had enough to cover what was going to come out, as they know? Um, it does become difficult as these contracts are outstanding for a number of years, but we were certainly confident in what we were projecting the award to be.
So the one thing I used to ask Ophelia a lot, and I guess in the absence of a project director, I can ask you, is why not just include that in the budget? Again, we're not sure, but we're using the word budgeted, so it says, it wasn't built into the fire department's budget, but instead was budgeted to contingency, why not budget that directly to the account where ultimately, in our estimation, be used so that it more accurately reflect the costs of that department?
It will be transferred to the fire department's budget, so we will see the history of what was actually spent and what's transferred from contingency. has actually been, and what's transferred from contingency, um, will be transferred to the FY seventeen budget, so we'll see that, what the actual expenses are. Um, when we don't know what the impact of the contract is going to be, we'll have to cut out at time. We do budget in the contingency account. Um, we don't necessarily want all the unions to know exactly how much we're putting aside in the department's budget, um, so just do some calculations in the contingency account.
It's more of an negoti- negotiating, I don't want to use the word tactic, but as you said, we don't necessarily tip our hand as far as what we're expecting and have them be able to glean from our budget proposals what the city expects. So we sort of just put it all in contingency until such time as we need to move it. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, sir, just, um, maybe Mike can answer. We were told that this is being done that way, right, Alamo?
Yes, well, through the, uh, monthly financial report, we have been reporting that a transfer would become necessary once, um, an award came out because the increase of the GWIs were not budgeted in the fire department's budget, so we would have the transfer of contingency. So, um, we were reporting that, um, within the monthly financial report for quite some time now, since the contract has been out.
Just wanted to make sure that we were talking about that.
Yes, I, I, no, just again, I, I think Sarah and I have had a discussion with Ophelia and I have had it several different times, so just, you know, don't want to, want to be unfair to Sarah and, uh, not ask her the same question as Sarah.
I would just add that from a timing standpoint, you know, this has come about at this time because the award came out in June timeframe. The retro component was calculated and paid out in July timeframe. This was the first opportunity to get a primary red, uh, transfer from contingency for this purpose before you.
Has everything been paid out? All of, you know, everything associated with those retroactive wage increases, et cetera?
Uh, yes, with the exception of there are a couple individuals, special circumstances, uh, where, um, they're more, uh, uh, more comprehensive calculations that have to work with. So we have a couple more individuals that they chair, but for all intents and purposes, um, it's been paid out in the amount that Sarah has requested for the transfer accounts for the, uh, the few more that goes up yet.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion clear. Item number eleven, aid to. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of the government approve the following bond authorizations. Bond authorization for demolition of abandoned properties to address blight in the amount of one million dollars. Bond authorization for wood buried in rain, wave phase one, in the amount of nine million, five hundred thousand dollars. Bond authorization for various road improvements, milling and repaving of streets in the amount of two million dollars. Bond authorization for partial roof replacement at Sprague School, Elementary School in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Bond authorization for East Liberty Bridge replacement in the amount of three million five hundred dollars. Bond authorization for the installation of elevators at Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools in the amount of one million, one million, eight hundred thousand dollars submitted by Michael Blank, Director of.
If I may, uh, for any actions taken, other questions this evening?
Yeah, thanks.
You got it covered.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to schedule a conference starting for Monday, September eleventh, starting at six forty-eight for item A, eleven A, six fifty for item eleven B, six fifty-two for item eleven C, six fifty-four for item eleven D, six fifty-six for item eleven E, and six fifty-eight for item eleven F.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'm sorry. Just a couple items. Um, on these resolutions, uh, the Department of Public Works will be looking to schedule a presentation on the Greenway for your meeting on September eleventh. Sal Porzio in the consulting for that project will be there that evening, uh, to provide an overview of the project. And, uh, just so that you're all aware, um, it was commented in public speaking, uh, that the overall authorizations in total are approximately seventeen million dollars. But as these, in relation to these authorizations, there are significant state and federal grants that are going to be accrued to these projects. So the net bonding, uh, we're projecting approximately, uh, seven million dollars, um, in total for all of these projects. In particular, uh, the Greenway, we're looking at approximately seven point four million, uh, in grant assistance, uh, for the roof replacement at Sprague School, uh, we're looking at approximately seventy-five percent of that cost. For the East Liberty Bridge, uh, project, we're looking at a fifty percent reimbursement, uh, through a state grant. And for the, uh, elevators at Washington and Bunker Hill, uh, we're looking at about a seventy-five percent grant reimbursement associated with those costs.
Mike, can you go over the numbers again? Is it seventeen?
Uh, seventeen point five, seven million.
Uh, approximately seven million. And I can bring on the evening of September eleventh the exact numbers, but, uh, for the Greenway, uh, the projected grant assistance is seven point four million. Uh, and for the Sprague roof, it's approximately seventy-five percent of that two hundred and eighty thousand. For East Liberty Bridge, it's fifty percent. So that one I can quickly calculate out, it's one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand of grant assistance, and then seventy-five percent on the, uh, the elevator projects.
On the other hand, we were actually going to request the, uh, presence of, uh, the chair from the Greenway Committee. Considering that you have all this scheduled, should we go ahead and do that or not?
For the, uh?
For the eleven, yes.
Sure. That one, yes, because I'll be able to be here making a presentation. Should the committee, um, take her?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion?
Just quickly, I think I heard the answer, Dave. I'm glad you got here just in time. The million paving, this is fall of two thousand and eighteen, it says. So over the next year or so, your department, your inspectors will be going around and sort of compiling that list, um, as you've done in years past, correct?
The list for this fall is being finalized right now.
This fall is being filed, yeah. And this authorization, I think, is for, it says fall of two thousand and eighteen. So, same thing, it's just, you know, ongoing to end. You usually, I think, provide us with that list, so you'll be getting us the list for this fall.
Yes, that would be bad, yes.
All right, thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of? Motion to second over the variance for A, B, C, D, E, F in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion clear. Item number seventeen. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of the government approve a contract for bond underwriting services of Piper, Jaffrey, and Company in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars as submitted by Michael Blank, Director of Highness.
Motion.
Say.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
I could have a question on seventeen. Oh, uh, just wanted to know what the, uh, so William Blair had the original winning bid. Was that the case?
Uh, for the, for the RFP process, they were selected number one. Uh, we actually went through, uh, full, uh, proof of contract with William Blair. Uh, and we were noticed, uh, possibly, uh, four to six weeks ago that, uh, uh, their corporation, uh, corporate headquarters had decided to discontinue, uh, uh, their participation in the municipal bond issuance market. Uh, so we're fortunate only in that, uh, we had an active recent RFP, uh, so I reconvened the committee, and, uh, the committee, uh, made the recommendation that we go with, uh, Piper Jaffrey.
Was this a second bid? No, it's a?
Um.
How did I go, how did the process?
Well, through the RFP process, it's not, uh, the price is certainly a factor, um, but we bring the participants, uh, without seeing the pricing until after the fact.
Okay, so, so they were, were they the second round?
Yes.
Okay, so I, okay, that was it.
Uh, and on the pricing standpoint, I will say both with William Blair and with, uh, Piper Jaffrey, uh, their, uh, per bond issuance fee, uh, in both cases are lower than what we were paying previously. Uh, so we're, uh, garnering some returns from the, uh, um, from the, the positive benefit of, uh, the city bond rating. Uh, it certainly, uh, positions the city to have it a little bit easier when it's selling these bonds on the market.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number nineteen, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of the government approve the State Department of Public Health Asmus Support Services contract application in the amount of eight seventy thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Grant period nine, nine zero one sixteen, eight thirty-one nineteen submitted by Cynthia Byton, Assistant Director of.
Motion.
Say.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion clear. Item number twenty, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of the government approve the State Department of Public Health Injury Prevention Grant Contract Application in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars. Grant period January one, two thousand and seventeen, August thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen submitted by Cynthia Byton, Assistant Director of.
Motion.
Say.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion clear. Item twenty-two, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of the government approve Ryan White Aid Healthcare and Support Services nineteen in the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Grant period April one, two thousand and seventeen through March thirty-first, twenty, two thousand and twenty submitted by Cynthia Byton, Assistant Director of.
Motion.
Say.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion clear. Item number twenty-three, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of the government approve Ryan White Aid Healthcare and Support Services order period in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Grant period April one, two thousand and seventeen, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty submitted by Cynthia Byton, Assistant Director of.
Motion.
Say.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion clear. Standing. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of the government approve and on the executive directive, the finance make refunds to taxpayers representing the over tax, over payments of tax bills in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Motion.
Say.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion clear.
Motion for chairman?
Say.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Further discussion?
What happened in the first one?
Okay. We can, um, return to the regular order of business. Item number two is on the consent calendar to approve the Waterbury Area Traffic Safety Program grant from the state of Connecticut in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Item four is on consent to approve a refund in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two dollars, fifty cents from Connecticut Permits Services, New Haven, for canceled roofing permits for four oh one New Ridge Avenue. Item five is on consent to approve a refund in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars from Solar City Rocky Hill, Connecticut, for a canceled building permit and electrical permit for two forty-one Hickory Hill Drive. Six is on consent to approve a refund in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars from Mars Electric Bethel for a canceled electric permit for twenty-one twenty-one Thomason Avenue. Item number eight is on consent to approve the per capita grant and aid funding application for state fiscal year two thousand and eighteen in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars, thirty-six cents. Item ten is on consent to approve a budget transfer within the central city's general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Item number eleven is on consent to set a public hearing on September eleventh, starting at six forty-eight P. M. with respect to the bond authorization for demolition of abandoned properties to address blight in the amount of one million dollars. Six fifty P. M. for bond authorization for the greater, for the Waterbury Greenway Phase One in the amount of nine million, five hundred thousand dollars. Six fifty-two for the bond authorization for various road improvements, milling and repaving of streets in the amount of two million dollars. Six fifty-four for the bond authorization for the partial roof replacement at Sprague Elementary School in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Six fifty-six for the bond authorization for East Liberty Bridge replacement in the amount of three million, five hundred thousand dollars. And six fifty-eight for the bond authorization for the installation of elevators at the Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. thousand dollars. Item number thirteen is on consent to approve an agreement with the Children's Community School Incorporated at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Item number sixteen is on consent to approve an agreement with Bell Academy of Cosmetology at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Item seventeen is on consent to approve a contract for bond underwriting services with Piper Jeffrey &amp; Company in the amount of four hundred twenty thousand dollars. Item eighteen, let me see if I can place on file, item nineteen is on consent to approve the state DPH ASMA Support Services contract application in the amount of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars for the grant period to cover September one, 2016, through eight thirty-one, 2019. Item number twenty is on consent to approve the state DPH Injury Prevention Grant contract application in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for the period of January first, 2017, through August thirty-first, 2019. Item twenty-one is on consent to approve a project authorization letter between the City of Waterbury and the Connecticut Department of Transportation for rights of way services in connection with the Waterbury-Nogga to Greenway Phase One, and authorize the mayor to execute said project authorization letter on behalf of the City of Waterbury. Item twenty-two is on consent to approve the Ryan White AIDS Healthcare and Support Services Torrington in the amount of four hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars for the grant period April one, 2017, through March thirty-first, 2020. Twenty-three is on consent to approve the Ryan White AIDS Healthcare and Support Services Waterbury in the amount of six hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars for the grant period April one, 2017, through March thirty-first, 2020. Item twenty-four is on consent to approve the authorization for the Police Department to apply for the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Item number twenty-five is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Donato Pesch to the Litter Control and Beautification Commission for a term commencing August twenty-one, 2017, and running through December thirty-first, 2020, and Fad Said to the Human Rights Commission for a term commencing on August twenty-first, 2017, and running through December thirty-first, 2019. Twenty-six is on consent to approve a professional services agreement with Delta T Group Hartford Inc. for a three-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of one million two hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred dollars to provide school psychological and related services to Waterbury District students. Twenty-seven is on consent to approve an agreement with the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Item twenty-eight is on consent to approve an agreement with Abbott Terrace Health Center at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Item number twenty-nine is on consent to approve an agreement with the Brass City Charter School at no cost to provide transition services for students with disabilities. Item thirty is on consent to approve a college facility request reservation agreement with Nogga Tuck Valley Community College at no cost for use of a room on campus for the Transition Learning Center program for students with disabilities. Item number thirty-one is on consent to set a public hearing for September twenty-fifth at six forty-five PM regarding an ordinance, a proposed ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on all applications related to the installation, alteration, and relocation of wireless communication facilities within the public rights of way in the City of Waterbury. Item number thirty-two is on consent to approve an agreement with Waterbury Symphony Orchestra Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars to provide music mentoring services to students enrolled in the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. Old Business Item number one is on consent to approve an ordinance regarding panhandling control, Chapter 132 of the Charter. And Item Old Business Number two is on consent to approve an ordinance change to Section 37.009, credit allowances to change the residency points from five to ten for the maintainer one position. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
So moved?
Made by Alderman Giacetti, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing done, a yes vote would be to approve it. As read, a no vote would be to disapprove the consent calendar. We have to do a roll call.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay.
Alderman Bernelli.
Yes.
Alderman Giacetti.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cummings.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman DiGio Van Carlo.
Yes.
Alderman Giacome.
Yes.
Alderman Guerra.
Yes.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Kula.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Padula.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Fourteen approved consent calendar.
The motion carries, the consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the Chair would recognize Alderman Hadley as the Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
So moved? Second. Motion having been made by Alderman Lopez and seconded by Alderman DiGio Van Carlo, is there any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, the refund is approved. With respect to that, is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Cummings?
Thank you. Just wanted to let everyone know that Waterbury Police Department and myself were hosting next Wednesday, August 30th, at six o'clock, a forum on police response times. So, it's open to the public, and anyone who has any questions and wants to talk to them about that particular topic is welcome to come. It's going to be at Chase School, six o'clock, next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Considering the timing here with the regards to the Greenway, I would love to, for this committee, for this body, to invite the Chair of the Greenway Committee for the next meeting on September 11th.
Yes, I believe that they are planning to come, we'll have a presentation scheduled for the 11th on the Greenway, so we can do that. Anything further? Hearing nothing, Alderman Bernelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Alderman Bernelli, seconded by Alderman Giacetti, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you very much.
Okay.